James City County School Board, and as we do, if I can have a motion to certify closed session, please.
I certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that the only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Ms. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
And if I can have approval of the agenda as presented, please. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For our audience here with us and anybody watching that had seen the agenda posted earlier in the week, we did remove one agenda item having to do with conflict of interest for the board. We had some last-minute information that we had received from the attorney and wanted to take that up in our October meeting, so that's why you don't see that conflict of interest item on the consent agenda. All right, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. All right, and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Ordigo is going to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, after God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can Ms. Ordigo? And we'll move on to our announcements and superintense report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, WJCC Schools was proud to launch Engage With Us, a new portal that consolidates division-level opportunities for stakeholders to be involved with WJCC Schools. Involvement opportunities may be different from one another and may vary throughout the year. Stakeholders may express an interest in volunteering for a one-time opportunity or at regular intervals, may seek to serve on a team, committee, or work group, may complete an electronic survey, or more. Current opportunities include expressing interest to serve on the Family Life Education Community Involvement Team, a workshop scheduling survey for families of students with IEPs, another opportunity indicating interest in providing feedback and communications tools, and always available, sign up to volunteer with WJCC Schools. Portal is accessible at wjccschools.org/engaged and will be updated with the latest division-wide opportunities throughout the year. School-specific opportunities will continue to be shared directly from each building. We're excited to build upon our engagement efforts with our community by using this new tool. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any board members with reports?
Yes, I have one from CAC. So, we had our meeting and we have a new, they call these rack cards. So, we have a new rack card for Special Advisory Committee, and one of our members, who's a student rep, designed, digitally designed the front, and it also has some QR codes on the backs. And these are in all the schools, and you may even see some out in the community, letting you know what we do in CAC. Also, we have a new parent resource person named Rick Baumaster, so that was very helpful. And CAC supports using inclusive planning tools from J-Lark, and so, they've asked that when the report comes out, they hope that we will get the resources to support it. And that's what I have for tonight.
Can Ms. Hunley and other members with a report this evening? I just wanted to mention that this board did meet with our city and county counterparts last Thursday in closed session, appropriately so, to discuss the threat and vulnerability assessment that we received from major fintrists a while back. And really, the goal behind that closed session meeting was to share with our city and county funding partners, as well as Chief of Police for Williamsburg City Police and James City County Police, respectively, where we are, the positions of the report, what we can improve on, and how to get there. And so, without really getting into great detail about what that looks like, really pleased that we're able to have that meeting and to see the collaboration in that room with respect to the safety and security of all of our faculty, staff, teachers, students, families that volunteer in the classrooms. The safety and security is paramount for each person, and there was nobody in that room that saw differently. So, just wanted to share that with the community and that we're trying to do what we can to stay ahead of those things that could do our children harm. Thankful for our funding partners. Let's move on to item five, public comment. Dr. Beers?
Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration during these presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And our very first speaker is Susan Hildum.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hildum, representing the York James City-Williamsburg NAACP Education Committee. And I want to let you know that we sincerely appreciate the commitment of the school district's administration and staff to supporting diversity in our school system, including your requirements for cultural competence training. The NAACP supports respect among all students, including for students of every minority group. That respect should include the opportunity to learn about the history of each group's contributions to the growth of our country and its stature in the world. We appreciate your recognition that diversity and the mutual respect that you work to instill in our students are the basis of a strong American society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildum.
And next speaker is Eileen Parham.
Good evening, Chairman Dowell, esteemed members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Ellen Parham, President of the Williamsburg James City Education Association, known as WJCEA. On behalf of the membership, I ask our elected officials and division leaders to discuss what measures the division will implement to maintain all WJCC employees. What factors will be put in place to allow us to compete financially with just York County alone? What can be done to elevate any issues within transportation and provide a livable salary to our bus drivers and ESPs? At the moment, we are not seen as a competitor, but we are the lowest-paying district within our neighboring divisions. Our salary should reflect goal number five of beyond excellence with human capital and positive culture. If WJCC staff aren't given adequate needs to thrive in the education profession, then how can we help our students? Our students, regardless of their race, gender, or background, deserve to have an equitable education by a WJCC staff whose salary should reflect their craft in a positive work environment, an environment where students everywhere, all students, should feel safe and valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parham.
Our next speaker is Tori Ottstadt.
Hi, my name is Tori Ottstadt, and I'm a resident of the Jamestown District of James City County. I'm an avid reader, and so is my daughter, who is a fourth-grade student in WJCC Schools. As you may know, this week is banned books week. This year's theme is Books Unite Us, Censorship Divides Us, and I think that's a crucial point. Did you know that over 1,000 unique books were banned in the U.S. in the last year? Or that 33% of all banned books contain LGBTQ+ themes? Or that one out of five of all banned books are about race and racism? These statistics come from the Southern Poverty Law Center, but as a book lover, I have read countless stories on social media over the last year of the authors of these books that are being banned. They are simply trying to share stories that are true to them and true to our students. Books that, as Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop calls them, serve as windows and mirrors to our students. Being able to read books that feature characters like you can affirm your identity. Being able to read books that feature characters who are different from you can help you build understanding, empathy, kindness, and acceptance. I ask that when calls for book banning come to WJCC Schools, the school board members stand united against censorship as our division leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ottstadt.
Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. I'm Marco Sardi, Vice President of WJCEA. However, today I speak only in my capacity as an educator here at WJCC. I teach here at James Blair as a related arts teacher, and I see a larger portion of students than the average subject teacher, and many teach, excuse me, and teach many students on the LGBTQ spectrum. Forming a relationship of respect with students is the most important part of my job, especially with teenagers. My students address me as Mr. Sardi, even though my first name is readily available. If I then tell those students I cannot use their preferred name, that limits a baseline of respect, which will limit my relationship and engagement. This is how I know my students will feel the changes made to the 2022 model policies. I strongly encourage the Board to consider the effects on our school climate. How can we set the example that you should be yourself, except only in the ways that we like? These changes will likely lead to higher rates of depression for trans students. I will conclude with these figures as provided by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Trans students ages 14 to 18 are 17% more likely to have a death wish. They are 20% more likely to consider suicide. They are 22% more likely to plan an attempt, and 20% more likely to follow through. They are then twice as likely to need medical care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi.
And our next speaker is Andrew Kason.
All right, I'd like to sneak in three points if I have time today. First, I'd like to address compensation for employees. We need to make serious gains in compensation for educators. Competitive pay is essential for attracting a diverse and highly qualified staff, and we need to dis- and we, as a district, have fallen way behind in comparison to the state average, and among the- and we are among the lowest in the region. We must demand adequate resources from our funding partners to make up that gap. For far too long, our partners have paid for one of the best-performing school districts in the state, but for the fraction of the cost, and this all comes at the cost of WJCC educators' lives and their quality of life. Their sacrifice makes up that difference. My second point, this week is banned book week, where we celebrate one of our nation's most cherished rights, the rights, the freedom of the press. Although in our current climate, I can understand why librarians may hesitate to teach a banned books lesson or put together a display of banned books for fear of negative feedback or pressure not to rock the boat in this kind of divisive climate. But to, but to me, the thought of banned books week passing without being noted is unconscionable. Therefore, I would urge the Boards to take action and recognize banned book week as an official division-wide event. That way, we tell the librarians, "We have your back. We believe that this is something that we can celebrate and cherish as a community." And on my last point, I think that, in regards to the last speaker, Mr. Sardi, I just concur with everything he said. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Next speaker is Anne Marie Smith.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to mention something that came to my attention. I and many in the public had made an assumption, without evidence otherwise, that all the textbooks that had been pre-approved and vetted by the Virginia Department of Education, these are the books that we were in controversy, that were recently approved. On April 22nd, 2022, sorry, April 2022, an AP article reporting on our local textbook selections even stated that they had been vetted by the State Education Department. This is actually not the case. AP books are not approved or reviewed by the Virginia Department of Education or the State Education Department. They're actually reviewed through a nonprofit organization known as the College Board. The Virginia Department of Education does not oversee any activities of this College Board, and not, there's not many public school districts that actually pay dues to this organization. None of the AP books that were approved appear on the VDOE list of pre-approved textbooks. In addition, the textbook titled Earth Science: Inspired Earth Science, which is not an AP book, is also not on the VDOE list of pre-approved textbooks that I could locate. Just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And our final speaker is Michael Hassan.
Good evening. Two of you on this stage are aware of this issue, but for the rest, a history teacher at War Hill asked her students on the first day of school, what are things that would trigger them? Several students stated that the rainbow flag that she had hanging in the classroom did. This teacher then stated that she was sorry that it triggered them, but that she was not going to take it down. War Hill uses an acronym PRIDE as its motto. Two of the words used are respect and empathy. Did this teacher honor these words? I raised this issue with two of you, along with the principal at War Hill, as did several other parents. The principal's response was that this was just from one class, and no one brought it to her attention, so the flag would stay up. I re-raised this issue, and an administrator from this school district stated that WJCC embraces inclusive practices for all students, yet agreed with the principal to keep it up. How is this teacher, principal, and administrator being inclusive to these students? Where was the respect and empathy shown to them? This history class discusses U.S. and Virginia history. How does this flag merit being up the entire year in such a class? If that's the case, what more, or what about more historically important items, such as the Confederate flag, the Nazi flag, or maybe the communist flag? Your own policy, Code AD, discusses supporting inclusion of students. If this flag is not removed, you've just alienated those and many other students whom you claim to care about. The only flags that should be hung year-round in any classroom are the U.S. and the Virginia flags. Anything else promotes an agenda of indoctrination, which will not be tolerated.
Mr. Chair, I have the emails that I discussed and also the syllabus for that class, and I'd like to hand that up to the- To the clerk? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, and thank you to each one of our speakers that have taken their time out of their day to come out and join this meeting and share your perspectives. I do, we do, I believe greatly appreciate your time. We'll move on to our consent agenda, item six. I'll do a little bit of reading here. Item 6.1, Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for August 2022. Approval of Minutes from August 16th, 2022. Approval of Minutes from September 6th, 2022. Approval of Minutes from September 8th, 2022, which was the joint meeting. And then, Approval of Resolution R1722 Bullying Prevention Month for the month of October. Item 6.6, Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance. Am I, my time is up? Or was it? Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance, case number R2223-02. Approval of Retirement of Policy IGB, credit for courses taught by high school and special ed teachers. Approval of Retirement of Policy JFBD, Magnet School Programs, item 6.9. Approval of rev-, excuse me, Approval of Revisions to Policy KLB, Public Complaints About the Curriculum or Instructional Materials. 610, Approval of Revisions to BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. 611, Approval of Revisions to Policy BCA, School Board Organizational Meeting. 612, Approval of Revisions to Policy BCB, School Board Officers. 613, Approval of Revisions to Policy BCC, School Board Clerk. Item 614, Approval of Revisions to Policy BDDG, Minutes. 615, Approval of Revisions to Policy BFC, Policy Adoption. And 616, Approval of Revisions to Policy BHB, School Board Member in Service Activities. May I have a motion on the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I ask that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for reading that.
My pleasure, and thank you to our Policy Committee and staff that have a great deal of work in preparing our Policy Committee for all of those policies. Thank you all for your diligent work there. If there's nothing else, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young? Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. All right, on to our action items. Item 7.01, if I can have a motion to approve Preliminary Financial Report and Year-end Spending Plan for June 2022.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Preliminary Financial Report and Year-end Spending Plan from June 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here on this item? Ms. Cook?
I just have some questions. Just if, Dr. Heron, if you could just remind us and the public what next steps are, should we approve this tonight? If you could just tell us what happens after that and what to expect, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
We will send the end-of-year spending plan to the county and city for their consideration, and then they will consider it at one of their meetings and hopefully approve it.
Okay, thank you. And you'll keep us abreast of the timing of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then, if they approve it, then the items embedded in this then come back to us for approval? Eventually?
Yes, eventually, yes.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. All right, item 7.2, Approval of Amendment to Fiscal Year 23 Operating Fund Budget. May I have a motion on this item, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board approve the amendment of the FY23 Operating Fund Budget as presented. The revised operating fund budget, $160,298,500. $298,500.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Yeah, Ms. Cook?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to state that as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg-James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 23 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget and any subsequent amendments fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there anyone else with that disclosure?
Also, I have the same disclosure, although I have a husband that works in the school division, but I can make a-
Participate?
Participate without any problems.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. So, I just want to make sure that we're all clear as to what we are potentially approving this evening on this amendment, the operating fund budget. Essentially, we received additional dollars, and I believe in our last meeting, we were asked that we also convey that to our funding partners, that these additional dollars came our way, and we do intend to do that if this is approved this evening. All right, Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Did that come through? Aye, there we go. Item 7.3, Approval of Amendment to Fiscal Year 23 Grants Fund Budget. May I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 23 Grants Fund Budget to $17,829,736.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Along the same lines as our last item, just making sure of that, at the end of the year, our budget is balanced. Along the same lines as our last item, just making sure that at the end of the year, our budget is balanced. We received a little bit more information on what we're receiving, and so we want to balance that budget. Okay, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Mr. Dow.
Hi. And seven four, approval of personnel actions. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Ms. Young. Sorry, Dr. Beers.
Miss Miss Young.
Mrs. Young? Soler?
Ms. Hummel.
Just a bit.
Hi. Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Mr. Dow.
Hi. And now item seven five, approval of award of contract for request for an RFP number two zero two two one two eight seven, foundational literacy decodable texts. And I'm going to give you an amount here in the amount of, excuse me, yes, thank you, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first two years. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for request for proposal number two zero two two one two eight seven, foundation literacy decodable text to just write reader, benchmark, express readers, great minds, McGraw-Hill, teacher-created materials, and whole phonics for a cost of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first two years.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any discussion? I believe we had several questions answered very well, articulated very well in our last meeting for us. Okay, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Mr. Dow.
Hi. Moving on to item eight point one, review advisory committee appointments. So this evening in closed session, we did hear from staff on three committees of the school board. It was Special Education Advisory Committee, the Student Advisory Committee, and the CTE Committee.
Twenty first, Twenty First Century and Career Ready.
That long one. Thank you very much, Dr. Heron. And without going into great detail, I think that, you know, our questions were answered in in closed session. And I think we'd be willing, I want to hear from the board, I guess, if we'd be willing to put this on our agenda for our next meeting for action.
Yes.
Or were there questions lingering that we needed to have answers to? Then I think so, but.
Just want to thank everybody who applied to serve, citizens, staff, teachers, students. It's really heartening to see those numbers increase every year. It makes decisions more difficult, but it also demonstrates more engagement, which Dr. Heron and her team have created a pathway for moving forward vis a vis her remarks earlier today. So it's just heartening to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And to tag along with that, it was interesting to hear that while there were a few that we couldn't bring onto a certain committee here or there, almost like almost all of the committees that we heard from this evening had been enlarged to allow for greater participation, which I think was fantastic. So if you were not selected, though you were had put your hat in the ring to to serve, I just encourage you to to do so next year. And. Okay, so we'll add this as an action item in our next meeting. Move on to item nine, board member comments. Want to make sure I didn't skip anything, because this feels pretty quick. We're good, okay. Ms. Young, can we start with you?
Sure, I'm happy to. Yes. I do concur with my colleague, Ms. Cook. I do want to thank people for applying for advisory committees. They they serve a very purposeful service to our to our school district and would encourage people to look for those opportunities to serve. And along with that, I want to remind people that the Family Life Curriculum Committee is gearing up and the applications are due by September twenty-fifth. Are you, if you, if that is something that you are very interested in, please make sure that you apply by that date, which brings me to my next point. We have several speakers tonight that talked about our students and especially about our LGBTQ students. I understand that that's a difficult period of time for our students, but I do want to remind people that there is certain literature that is not appropriate for every student. When I went through university, which it may have changed completely, there was a child development classes talked about developmentally appropriate things. It's things that students learned at each level of their life and things that they were ready for. I would encourage ours, I would encourage people to remember that not every piece of literature is is appropriate for a first grader. And I certainly, as a mother and a parent, would not encourage things that I think are totally inappropriate for students to be looking at. There's, they're children. We are not here to indoctrinate children and and lifestyle. We are here to support families and parents and their decisions. And as a person who believes strongly in having raised seven of my own children, I know that they reach a certain level where they're asking questions. And maybe we need to wait until students have natural curiosity and or interest and then allow parents to take their role and to to handle that. There's not, the school is not a parent. We are an institution and we are here to teach. We're here to teach curriculum, history, math, and to prepare our students for the world that they're about to face, which has changed drastically in just the past five years and will continue to change. And I think that's that's the way it should be. But we also need to remember that our children are children and let them enjoy their childhood. There'll be plenty of time for them to become as crazy as the rest of us adults. So and that's my into my comments tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
No comments.
No comments, okay. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I just want to briefly draw attention to the resolution that we approved tonight. And it was on our consent agenda, so we didn't really discuss it. But we're recognizing October, by the time we meet again, it will be October as bullying prevention month. And I just think this is something that's important to draw attention to. Bullying does come in all forms, shapes, sizes, ages, fora. And and we certainly want to all work together to make sure that our students and our staff and our families can all enjoy living in this community and enjoy their education without bullying. And it's it's on every single one of us to prevent bullying of all forms. And so I just want to state that and and draw attention to the resolution that we approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Hunley?
Yes, also, it is Hispanic Heritage Month. It runs from September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Not sure why it's broken up in the month that way. So just wanted to recognize any of our families that are of Hispanic heritage. And, you know, I hate that it's just in a month. We do celebrate all cultures throughout months, but I do know that that is a national month. And also, it was exciting to get into schools. Went to James Blair Middle School and they were getting awards for attendance. Attendance is so important, so I'm just would like to reach out to parents and say thank you for getting your babies up in on the buses and and in school where they can be engaged in learning. And we were also at Lafayette High School and could see the learning that's going on there. And and I know we were all looking, I know as I was as a board member, to see how cellphone use was going. And I know it's a hard thing for kids, but we saw a lot of children engaged in classrooms with their teachers and in their studies. And and I just appreciate the parents that are supporting us with the cellphone policy.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to comment on our year-end spending that we passed today. You know, the perennial look at our bus replacement plan and which has been the same for, well, it's been slightly adjusted over the years. But with the pandemic and, you know, the buses not having very many miles put on them during the pandemic and then moving to non-transportation zones for some neighborhoods and then fewer bus drivers and then time adjustments to the school start times to accommodate fewer bus drivers. I I hopefully that that plan, I have been asked a couple of times and I think it probably deserves another fresh look to either, you know, shorten the number of years or shorten the number or lower the number of buses that we buy every year. I I just think that needs another look. So I just want, since that's a perennial thing that we look at at the end of the year when our budget is nearly done, I just thought I would comment on that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to operations and to the transportation team. I I see these school buses rolling and the bus drivers so faithful to to hit their routes and but to have the opportunity to tour ops and to see just how the sausage is made, so to speak, and just the effort that goes into it in the moment. It would, it's amazing the the work that they do and how strategic how strategic they can be, but but also recognizing that the complaints do come through and that they can be have the wherewithal to pivot in a moment and recognize how to serve the community in a different or more practical way. So I just wanted to say that we recognize the effort that ops and transportation team in in general is putting forth and is is very much appreciated. Also, we heard from a few tonight on funding and being competitive in the region. And yes, we agree. But I also wanted to point out the fact that, as we had mentioned earlier, meeting with our funding partners, those that carry the purse for us, we do have funding partners that see the need that we have great relationships, building great relationships with and constantly communicating with them, with those at the city and county level of governance on how to meet the needs as we see them. And so, yes, we agree that there are areas that we could make up, that we could potentially make a difference or exceed, potentially potentially exceed. But that's a constantly moving bar that we're up against. And just as much as we want to be aggressive and as we coined last budget cycle bold, there are other divisions that are just as, just as, I should say, with their budgets, so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, I did, I did, thank you. No, 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 I did. Thank you. I'm being told to remember Dr. Beers. I apologize for skipping over you, Dr. Beers. But those are my comments. And Dr. Beers, let me, you, go ahead and speak. Are you sure? Yeah. Okay, I apologize for skipping over you. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Those are my comments. Let me move on. Are you sure, Dr. Beers? Last chance. Okay, upcoming events. Looking at the SBA Legislative Advocacy Advocacy Conference, where I will be there with Dr. Beers and I'm going to buy him a soda as an apology for skipping over him tonight. That's going to be September twenty-second and virtually for our members that will be checking in virtually in Charlottesville. And then Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on October thirteenth at six thirty virtually and at the REIT Center. Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting on October seventeenth at three thirty in room three hundred in the NX. The Student Advisory Committee meeting on October nineteenth at three at Jamestown High School Media Center, the library. And then the Policy Committee meeting on October twentieth at eight thirty AM in room one oh eight at Central Office. And then for our upcoming meetings, we have closed session and work session with action items on October fourth, four and four thirty respectively, room three hundred at the Central Office. Closed session and regular meeting on October eighteenth at six and six thirty. Room three hundred for closed session and then the regular meeting here in the gymnasium. And the sound was great today. I think we've got it working well. All right, with that, let's adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.